Call the regular meeting of the city council at the order. Our retiring customer. By who's gonna mumble.
Thanks so much.
It's back.
I think so.
Yeah, I think so too. So, Mr. City Manager, if you could look up the protocol of how our flags are placed, which side is the American flag? Which side's a state flag? Just to check if this is right.
Yes, sir. Sure will.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. So, first item is councilman reports. You have a report, Councilman Flack.
Nothing to report, sir.
Well, Councilman Donahue.
Hold on, I gotta pull up my notes. I'm just kidding. All right, starting with, again, Farmers Market is awesome, continues to be. Would like to say thank you to all the voters who indeed passed the bond, which didn't look like it was going to pass and then therefore did. So what I'd like to say is for those of you that still value education and see that our schools are severely underfunded. That's our own right, so thank you, and incredibly important. I want to compliment the staff and whoever, whatever team came up with the sensory hour from the Touch a Truck. I heard some incredible feedback from that, including adults that went, because they too don't like to hear all the sounds. And so I just think that was really an awesome gesture, and so kudos to all of you. This is indeed my last meeting, so I just want to say that I have enjoyed tremendously my eight years in this semicircle. It's been an incredible experience. I want to thank many of you for your mentorship, many of you for taking my calls, many of the staff for your patience as I learned civic government. I have a huge amount of respect for all of you, especially the staff, because many of you know I don't love the speed of municipal government, but I have a lot of respect for it now, because obviously we have to do our time in making decisions, and my impulsive personality doesn't match that sometimes. And of course, I'm not going away, I'm just moving on, and I'm going to try to spend time up on the hilltop and try to continue to get that rolling. So there's lots to do up there. And I promise to not call in too many favors, Matthew or city, but I do happen to live on the cul-de-sac where there's four of us, and I just might hear some information and so forth. And then therefore also, I know, we still receive calls from citizens, so I promise my pledges, I will only thank to you, community matters for what matters to the community, not little piddly thing. I promise I will still prioritize. So with that, I just say cheers.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. Okay, Councilman, we're watching, we want to top that.
Well, I want to start off by thanking Councilwoman Donahue for all of her time and effort, and thank you in advance for what you're gonna do to help move the hilltop along. It's greatly appreciated. It's been a busy month, I enjoyed a lot of things. The employee lunch here at the park was fantastic, it was really fun to watch the pie eating contest. I won't tell you who won that one, but Mr. Janaski, I think it was you. I attended the CLP, excuse me, CLG and HPC meeting with the city manager and Ann and several other attendees, and it was really interesting to see that play out. The flag raising was again very good, we did a, you guys did a fabulous job honoring our Marines on their birthday, and I believe it was the day before Veterans Day, or the Friday before the Veterans Day, so that's great. Southwest Valley Legislative Breakfast happened this last month. It was interesting to meet all of our new legisla, all of our legislators, and it was a panel this time that actually had things to say. Last year when they were up there, there were two brand-new people, and as we can all attest, they were like, I'm anxious to learn, but I know nothing. So, but this year we had representatives from both sides of the aisle and some good questions and some good answers. Attended the public trucking meeting. I was surprised at the turnout, I thought it would be a little bit higher than it was, but enough about that. And Awafria, your Hall of Fame event this year honoring Charlie Salem was really special, thank you. Christmas lights are up, and already people are calling and saying they look so beautiful, thank you. And likewise, I've been to the Farmers Market, looking forward to when we get to have it in the square. That's about it.
Thank you. Councilman James, you have a report after.
Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. This is that time of year where there's so many events to attend, it's impossible to attend them all, but it looks like between, between this group, we're hitting most of them. I was at the Litchfield Park Historical Society meeting with Jim Painters, was a featured artist with his photography exhibits back over the decades, which was fascinating to look at the photos that are in there. Anybody hasn't seen it, it is well, well worth looking at. The Chamber Social was at Old Pueblo this month. Calabac Truck Study Meeting, we were all at. The Concert on the Wigwam Lawn. The Farmers Markets, I've been to a few times, it's kind of, kind of fun to walk around in there. And there's numerous other events, voluntary events that I've been to. Driving to the new city center with some of the fences down is kind of nice, it's enjoyable to see what's happening in there. I saw in the city manager's report that we did the, the walkways onto the Bullard Wash Park, and I went and looked at those. I'm happy to see that staff revised their initial recommendation, the old staff recommendations, that was a hundred and some odd thousand dollars, which we didn't need all of those massive ramps, and we got to three ramps that are, aren't really much of a ramp, but they're, they're concrete that gets us into the park, which is what I was looking for. So I'm happy to see that that is happening finally. I know as somebody mentioned, we work at the speed of government, but we do eventually get it done, apparently. Thank you, Matthew. And Ann, we will miss you, you won't be too far away. You've done a fantastic job, and we appreciate it having you on the council. Always great having another person with a different outlook. And any problems with Historical Society, please feel free to call me, and I will do what I can.
I will.
That's one of my favorite projects, so that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Let me begin by thanking Councilwoman Donahue for her service on the council and the community. We have enjoyed, we have enjoyed your participation and energy and the things that you have injected into various debates that we've had over the years, and they were all, they were all helpful, so thank you very much. We also want to recognize Councilman Romack, who decided to retire early. He decided to retire early though for probably a broken, a good idea. He's in the middle of a river craft, a riverboat cruise, so he's cruising some river in Europe. Probably, probably in bed now, I'm sure he's going to the wine and cheese earlier, earlier today when we were having lunch. So we also want to thank Councilman Romack for his contributions over, you know, over the decade of service to the city. The only, I only wanted to mention a couple, a couple of things that are, I think particularly important that happened since the last time, last time we had a meeting. Excuse me, the first is that city manager and I met with the, what will be the first builder in Litchfield Square. They have purchased all of their lots and they believe have applied for their building, and if they haven't, it's ready to be applied for. They will be putting shovels in the ground a little bit in December, but with the holidays, they won't really start in earnest so that you can see progress until January. The first thing you'll see probably is construction fans coming up around their lot. So you'll start seeing activity there with grading and putting in, putting in their foundations and all sorts of things. So that's a, that's a real milestone for us to get the first building started. Second thing that also was an important milestone, city manager and I attended the Awafria School Board meeting, and had the pleasure of discussing, discussing questions with the board over the Hilltop Project and the Performing Arts Center and the Arts Capitol, and discussing with them. It was very positive, and made a lot of progress there, and you're gonna see the proof of that progress later in our joint activity in the form of our needs and development, so that was another important thing that happened this last month. And then finally, I want to say thank you to the staff for the, for the lights. I was surprised to see the big trees with lights on them, actually. It's quite a, it's quite an impressive display between the palm tree lights and red and green lights and the big, I don't know what kind of trees they are, but they look, they look festive. So thank you for whoever designed that display, and it was good that we committed the funds to get that done professionally. So that was, that's a good job, thank you. With that, we'll go to city manager's report, do you have anything beyond what's in the packets?
Our mayor and councilman report is in the packet, I'll come in questions if there are any. That being said, as the mayor said, Councilman Romack isn't here, but I would like to thank them both for their service and say I will miss Councilmember Donahue, I look forward to seeing you refocus your efforts on the hilltop and the Historical Society, and it's been a pleasure to work with you. If you don't mind me saying, Councilmember Donahue is a good bird dog, she's good at, at staying on things and making sure they get done and say, well, have we tried this, let's look at doing it that, and she's, she's good at getting things done, and we will miss you, and certainly wish you the best, but we'll certainly continue to work with you on the Hilltop and Historical Society. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your report. That brings us to this meeting's call of the community. It's an opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. We have one request to speak in the call of the community. From Shelley Smith Hornback. Good to see you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Council, good evening, thank you for this opportunity, I'm Shelley Hornback. I live in downtown Phoenix, and I'm here this evening to celebrate and honor our friend, councilmember Ann Donahue. I moved to the Southwest Valley two decades ago. This is my time to immerse. So I moved to Verado two decades ago when there was a BASHs and a school. And so I quickly immersed myself in the community and learned Ann Donahue's name immediately. Any leader in the Southwest Valley knows Ann Donahue, and she stood out for me like she stands out for everyone as a bright, passionate, dynamic, committed leader. So I was delighted and honored when she mentored me from the start. We've all been watching Ann lead and serve the city and its partners for such a long time. Westmark Mavericks, La Loma Sun Health, the Historical Society, Southwest Lending Closet, the Chamber, Litchfield School District, Awafria School District, Avondale School District, Continue the Quality, which is the Tri-District Act that serves those school districts to get their bonds and overrides passed. You've been tireless, and John's been very patient, and we're all so delighted and grateful. You have left a tremendous legacy in this community, not only with the city and its partners, but well into the quickly growing Southwest region. So thank you for your service, we are all grateful, we owe you a debt of gratitude for your commitment and your leadership, and we so deeply admire your legacy. Congratulations. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate the time.
You're coming in, honoring the council. Appreciate it. Okay, next item is our presentation section, we're going to first introduce some new employees, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm mayor and council, I don't know that, okay, I don't think any of them are here, but for our new employees, so we have Marco Agari, Jeffrey Hargitson, Lorenzo Pedrago, John Dodario, Mark Aguilar, and Julian Jarmeo. And none of them are here, but we thank them and welcome them to the team.
Welcome them for the council as well. Next item is one of my favorites for the quarter. I've said this probably every quarter since I was elected mayor, so most of you have already heard this. This is our recognition of the employee of the quarter. This is an employee who has, who has done such a great job of service to the community and also service to her other fellow workers, and she's being recognized by the staff, a lot of managers, but the staff as being our most outstanding employee for this quarter. So I would like to call her up and thank her for her service. It's Sammy Samantha Lasagna, I suppose to that, something like that. That's why I always tell you Sammy.
Sammy P.
So we have a, we have a certificate for you. And more importantly, and you probably know, this titles you to a day off of pay. You'd like to say anything?
I honestly really love my time here with the Litchfield Park, the event side. It can be crazy, but it's so hard for me to be able to come together. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Next item is to recognize that you did a proclamation for NASCAR championships. We refer to NASCAR championship as well, but the championship race that was held. I believe it was held last, two weeks ago, it was two weeks ago, this was the race. So it brought in a tremendous amount of economic activity for all of the Southwest Valley, really all of the, all of the Phoenix metro and metropolitan area. I think more than a billion dollars, so it's, it's like having a Super Bowl every year that we have it on here. So we recognize that with a proclamation. Next item is reports. And we have a report from the Goodyear Fire Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Ed Paul, Deputy Chief of the Goodyear Fire Department. I have October's run report for you guys. In October, we, we had seventy-five total calls for service, that's down twelve calls from September, and I would blame that on the cooler weather, and up six from October in twenty-three. Sixty-five of those calls were EMS calls, one was a passenger vehicle fire, six car accidents, one hazmat call that was a golf cart battery offassing in a garage, and one fire alarm malfunction. Our Community Response Unit, the Crisis Unit, responded to five incidents, two check welfares, two codes, and one altered level of consciousness. Fire Prevention did forty-two occupancy inspections. The Loma had fourteen total calls for service, twelve of those were transported, four of them were falls, and three of the falls were transported. hacienda had seven total calls for service, six that were transported, three of them were falls, and two of those falls were transported. Any questions?
Questions for the council? Your report is so good that we have no question.
You did a great job.
We really appreciate, we appreciate you coming down here and taking time out of your, you give us the report, and more and more importantly, we appreciate your service, your department gives us, so thank everybody that's involved.
I will, thank you.
Okay, next up is the Avondale Litchfield Park Police Officer Report, Police Department Report.
So Mayor and Council? Sorry, yes, Sergeant Emmett. Sergeant Emmett, the Avondale Police Department, we got the October twenty-twenty-four report. So for this month, we had, for last month, sorry, we had four hundred and seventy-one calls for service. That includes self-initiated by traffic stops and citizen calls for service. That's up from three hundred and thirty-four we had in October twenty-twenty-three. Big reason for the jump, a lot more self-initiated, we've still kept our focus on traffic, we've kind of increased our record every month. We had a hundred and seventy-one traffic stops for the month, which was up from eighty-five in October the year before. Thirty-nine citations, up from sixteen. We had sixty business checks, fifty-one speed details, and fourteen community contacts for the month. Any questions?
Questions for the council?
The uptick in ticket buying, was that in a particular area, was it around school zone, was it Camelback?
Mostly Camelback has been our main focus, Camelback and Litchfield Road, but we do still make sure we hit all the streets going down Wigwam, via the way that stuff like that. But our primary focus, where our biggest, where we've seen the biggest infractions is on Camelback.
Thank you so much.
That's good. Keep it up, and definitely we want to see the traffic speeds slow down on the Camelback.
Definitely.
Well, thank you. No other questions, thank you for your service, please thank all the officers that work in the city, we appreciate their service as well.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is finance report. Do you have a report beyond what's in, in here, or do you want to highlight some of the things that are in the packet?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I don't have anything to highlight, everything is in the packet, but I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Questions from the council concerning the financial report that you received, or anything else to do with finance? Thank you for your report, looks like you're keeping track of the money, and that's important, appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, next item up is, is the contamination plume update. For the city engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, the report is in your packet, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain. Bring up the exhibit. This was in the packet, but wanted to highlight some of the benefits. PGA EPA teaming together. There is air, this should say two thousand and twenty-four in the exhibit. So as you can see over the last fourteen years, the turquoise line was a lot closer to the city limits and has now been retracting southwest. Every year, that line moves a little bit more. The PGA team has converted many extraction wells to injection wells in the area of just south of the RID and north of the RID, but all south of Indian School. Injection wells, clean water, push the plume south. As you can see, it starts getting a little thicker, dark red dot there in the middle, that's where the focus point is, they have a lot of extraction wells in that area. So over the next twenty years, that plume should be gone. DCE is a difficult chemical to remove from groundwater in the ground, it's essentially brake cleaner. More or less, it's, it's more chemical attributes, but it, and underground, it travels all over the place, and the air it evaporates. So the, the way to clean it up is they bring it out, they let it sit in a lagoon, it evaporates, and they put the clean water back in the ground. It's very simple to treat, but when it's underground, it's very invasive. So we'll record on the progress of the EPA, so if there are any questions?
Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you. In your report, you mentioned you were working with Luke on the, the firefighting chemical that's in the groundwater that locates the monitoring wells. Do we have a map yet to show or approximate where you think the contamination is?
Mr. Vice Mayor, that's actually the reason why the monitoring wells, they don't know the exact limits. They have several Liberty Wells that have reported PFAS up in the area of Glendale and El Mirage near the treatment plant. The treatment plant itself reported quite a bit of that PFAS, and so they know it's east, and it's actually in the Awafria Riverbed in some areas. They have another monitoring well in the neighborhood of Missouri and Bethany, I'm sorry, Dyser in Missouri, further to the east that has tested positive for PFAS, so they know it's heading that way. And so one of the ideas for the monitoring wells is to help locate the limits. And after, my understanding is after the limits are determined, then they will enact another plan to move or add more monitoring wells, and then once they isolate what we're calling the plume, they'll start moving into a mode that's similar to what's happening with PGA's.
Do the charts show the flow of the groundwater from that PFAS area towards the city?
The historic groundwater has, when the residential were more agricultural, which is the reason why this plume actually traveled several miles north was the intense groundwater retraction. Same, that's the why PFAS has gone south and southeast was historic pumping. Since that's gone away, because a lot of places have turned in, a lot of ag fields have turned into residential, they don't pump very often, so they're, they don't know where it is exactly from my understanding, trying to cast a net and see what they catch.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Whether you need a PFAS or the, okay, thank you for your report. I guess you can stand, stand in the same spot and talk to us about capital improvement projects.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report is in the packet, I'll briefly go over a few projects. Dyser Indian School, as of Saturday, November sixteenth, the final course of asphalt was installed, and temporary paving, or I'm sorry, temporary striping was installed. Approximately three weeks from now, they'll put the thermo striping in, and it'll be completely done. But anybody that's driven through there, there's no traffic control, it's wide open, running very smooth. Bullard Wash Pathway Connection, as the Vice Mayor mentioned earlier, is complete, it was completed on the twelfth by the same contractor that did Dyser Indian School. The city contracted with them, came in under budget, and they beat the schedule by about two or three weeks, so very happy with the results. Downtown Stormdrain Project, which affected the downtown Old Litchfield and Fairway for many, many months, is complete, but the modification of the flood maps is taking its time, as Vice Mayor mentioned earlier, or maybe it was Mr. Mayor, the speed of government. The federal government has another year, and so that is still ongoing. They have, they have comments to our, our letter of map revision, and it takes about just a month to even turn that around, and it takes them two months to come up with one or two more comments and another two, so it's, it's moving along. We hope that that gets done here before New Year's, that's my, that's my hope. Calabac Parking Lot is under design, ninety percent plans have been completed, and staff is reviewing that. Public Works Facility Design, we will be engaged in that here in the winter, so we're gonna engage an architect to start working towards a more preliminary design. The construction of that project has been delayed until the next fiscal year when we have more budget capacity. Similarly, with the perimeter wall phase seven project in Camelback Road, designs are about ninety percent complete. We have added the southern wall, the southern Camelback Park wall along the residences has been added to the design. That design, all the design is about ninety percent complete. Again, that project's budget for construction moved on to the next fiscal year when we have more capacity. And then we have the perimeter all phase six, which is along Lukana and Fairway, and that's being reviewed by a contractor right now, so hopefully I can get a bid price for that up here in the next couple of weeks, and I can report on that next council meeting. With that, entertain any questions, concerns?
Council. Just a comment, we, I think we did a really, really good job of being school and master. That was, that whole intersection is less in the southeast corner. I mean, it's the, it's the house, it looks like, it looks like a very professional design intersection. So thank, you know, thank you for all the efforts that went into that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item is magistrate report, you have a report in your packet concerning that, if you have any questions, take it to the city manager.
Special projects.
Let's skip special projects. Okay, excuse me, Randy. I did, I got all, get all excited about English feeling nicer, let's skip those. Get over your spine.
Mayor, members of council, I would just call that a very complete report that was prepared in your packet, and I'd be happy to answer any further questions.
Okay. Any questions about the special projects report that's in the packet?
Help me, James, sure.
Sure.
I was trying to make sure we had enough time. Okay, thank you.
We'll talk more later, don't you worry.
Good job. All right. Now you can, now if you have any questions about the magistrate's report, you can take that to the city manager. It brings us to our consent agenda. On the consent agenda, items, it's item eight, eight through A through I, we are, I'm speaking, we're removing item eight B, which will go back to staff for some further work because there's impressions on one of the provisions. So is there a motion to adopt, well, is there, is there anything else, any other item on the consent agenda that any member of council wishes to pick up?
Removing B as a void?
B is a void, eight B. So if not, then is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda items eight, eight through I, with the exception of B?
Still moved.
Allos in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any others? Mr. City Attorney, do we need a motion to table eight B, or can we just leave it, have it just said send it back, send it back to staff?
Let's have a formal motion for it.
Is there a motion to table item eight B for further work by the city, by the city staff? Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Question. Do I vote or abstain?
No, you vote, there's no conflict on the, on that issue.
Okay. Any further, any other questions? Allos in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Do you oppose? All right, item eight B will come back in the future. That brings us to the student agenda, nine A, which is a consideration of the Aguafria School District Joint Development Agreement and Brown Lease. We have Matthew Williams, who's going to present it, but we're also pleased to know that we have Mark Eastless, who is the superintendent of the Aguafria, and Megan Grego, who is on the, on the Executive Board Committee, I'm not sure exactly what he calls the group, but she's one of the leaders also. But before, before you go with this anything, we have a request to speak on this item, and we're going to recognize that request to speak before we go into the item itself, so that's a request from John, it's a coach, coach. I'm sorry, say it again? Couture, I'm sorry, so you're welcome to come up.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members. We realize the presentation hasn't been given yet, but we, we wanted to just express from Sun Health's perspective that when the Denny's entrusted this land to the city and to Sun Health, they had a vision for vibrant living, and we believe that this project, it would meet their pleasure. We believe that it will create another hub in Litchfield Park for culture and socialization. And you know, there's not many more things that are more important than education. And we look forward to working with Aguafria and the city to advance this project, we will do whatever we can to further the infrastructure, which we're taking the lead on. And we realize that some of our residents have concern about the density on the hilltop, and we're working with them, and we appreciate Aguafria and the city inviting us to the table to help figure out ways that we can mitigate that the lights and the, the potential noise for our residents, so that they can enjoy, you know, their, their retirement. So we appreciate, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and we look forward to this partnership.
Can we clarify, you're with Sun Health? You're with Sun Health, I presume?
Yes. So, and I'm sorry for mispronouncing your name, say it again, please.
Couture.
Couture, didn't want to mess it up again. Mr. Couture is with Sun Health. We appreciate, we appreciate your comments and, you know, about the project. I think that those of us who have looked at the, at the documents that, that made the gifting of property to Sun Health, as well as the documents that made the gifting of the hilltop to the city, believe that this is exactly the kind of project that fit within the vision that the family had in the form of the Denny's for this property. And I, I personally believe that, you know, I agree with you, it's going to be, I think it's going to be a cultural hub for the Southwest Valley. And I think it will actually help you with the shore development. As we get this done, that activity, and this, this improvements to the hilltop are going to make your Sun Health development, I think, an easier path, you know, on an easier path forward. Thank you for coming down and introducing Sun Health's position.
May, may.
Yes.
And I want to say thank you, because I've had some concerns about how the management of Sun Health viewed that project. If you come in here and tell us what you're thinking, if you wanted to be involved, that is fantastic. It is a big relief to me trying to move forward with this.
Yeah, I skipped my introduction.
Yes.
I'm the Chief Optimization Officer, I've been with the organization almost two years. So the organization has entrusted me with the development of the Loma campus and the various districts. And we're thrilled that the city is taking the lead and really charging forward with the development of the hilltop. We're excited to be part of that and do our part with the infrastructure, because that's a big, it's a big lift to get the infrastructure done, to the roads and sewers and so forth. So we're excited about this, and we're just so thrilled to be part of the Aguafria City Partnership, because we're neighbors. And we want to do what we can to make this, this really come alive, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I really appreciate it too, John and Suzie, because I've received lots of calls from our Sun Health friends or Loma friends. I was afraid that they single-handedly maybe brought down the bond, but luckily they didn't. You know, had a handful of people saying they weren't voting for the bond, but well, luckily enough people did. But I appreciate that you two are going to be messaging, I will also help with that, with my connections up there, to try to let them know that it's okay, you know? So I think it's hugely important that you guys support that as well, and I'll try to help you from, from the ground up to, with the messaging as well.
And, and thank you for acknowledging that, we understand, and we, we understand our residents, change is hard. And you know, this, they've had a view of the campus for many years, the way it is. And, but we also appreciate that especially Aguafria and the city have worked with us to do what we can to maybe shift the traffic, the park, the parking rather, and the lighting, so that it doesn't go into their apartments. And there, I think there are things that we can do together as a team that can mitigate some of the concerns, so we appreciate that partnership.
Okay. So we'll go on with the item. Mr. City Manager, are you, are you going to have one of your helpers here make the presentation?
Actually, Mayor, Mayor Council, the staff is going to start the presentation, and then I will take it over after they get through their slides.
Good evening, Mayor Schoff and council members, my name is Megan Grego, I'm the Senior Executive Officer for Aguafria High School District. On behalf of our governing board and Superintendent Eastless, I'm the lead for our district concerning this potential partnership and amazing development. You might have noticed when you came in, there are some renderings over on this side of the room showing the project in life. Well, not quite yet, but we hope to bring it out of the dirt soon. In addition to our superintendent, Mr. Mark Eastless being in attendance with me, I've also invited Wendy Odom, she's with the ADM Group, and has really helped bring our vision to life with those beautiful drawings that I referenced. I'm going to move forward through a presentation, which is on the screens here for you, to talk about this proposed Arts Academy and potential partnership with Litchfield Park. A few years ago, our district set out to understand what the community thought we should be focusing on as a district. We realized that there were three different things, over five hundred community members in the nearby area said should be our focus. Those included creating academic choice, crafting character in our students, and cultivating community. With that in mind, we've been moving forward on several different initiatives. One of the biggest ones being creating academic choice for our students. We know that there's a lot of post-secondary opportunities for students, whether they enlist in the military, whether they enroll in a college, or whether they, they become employable in our industry, that there's a lot of different pathways. For us, we know here in the Southwest Valley, there's a great need for more business and industry to come to the area. And one of the site selection factors that's looked at, in addition to quality of life, great school systems, is arts and culture. So we believe that by offering academic choice, we can provide our students with a great pathway to careers that are in high demand within the entertainment and arts industry, and also help contribute to the quality of life that all of us West Valley residents would appreciate with me more arts and culture. With that in mind, I submitted a request for partnerships to all five municipalities that our school district serves. We cover Avondale, Litchfield Park, Buckeye, and Goodyear. Within that, we had several municipalities submit what we should consider as a potential site for a future Arts Academy and Performing Arts Center. We really became interested in one particular site located here on Litchfield Park as depicted on the photo, and that's the hilltop. I'm sure everyone in the room is familiar with this, but just to acquaint anyone who's unfamiliar with it, we have Litchfield Road on the east side of that photo, and to the south is Camelback. This project would be located within fifteen acres known as the Hilltop, which is a very historic area. When we thought about what we'd like for the school to be around, we realized that we wanted it to be part of a cultural center. We wanted a place where our community could come and experience and see for themselves the talent of our youth who would be going to school at the Arts Academy. In order to make this an attractive place for the type of students who have chosen this as a career path, we also know that needs to have vibrancy and proximity to other cultural elements in the area. So item number one and two on the map are the school and the Performing Arts Center. Number three is the future upcoming library. Number four are the historic preservation of the homes at the hilltop. And number five is the restoration of the landscaping terraces and bandstand. So in all, with this being a cultural center here in Litchfield Park, it makes perfect sense for our project to be located on the hilltop. The Arts Academy itself would host eight different programs within it, cinematography and film, dance, music, music production and recording, theater, set design and production, visual arts and vocal performance. Now, this school is not for the students who may just have a recreational interest in arts, we certainly value that, and know that that does further enhance our academics when students are involved with things like dance, music and theater. But this program in particular is positioned so that students who at an early age have chosen arts and entertainment as their career path will come to a very specialized school. We'll offer those students who choose a more traditional or recreational approach to arts to attend one of our traditional high school campuses, where we also offer robust music, arts and theater, whereas this will have more of a tie to what they want to do post-secondary. So this is an outside view, it's just a rendering or a concept of what the Arts Academy and Performing Arts Center could look like. So if you were standing on Litchfield Road and kind of looking southwest, this is what you would see, you'll see the Fine Arts Academy entry on the left and the Performing Arts Center on the right. You would be driving into the property, and you'll notice that the architecture here is very reflective of the Santa Barbara style that is mimicked throughout all of Litchfield Park. We're really proud to have worked with the city on those design concepts to make sure that the historic integrity that has been long established here in Litchfield Park is maintained with this project. Here's another photo showing the front of the high school. Here's another side view of the high school, you'll see the arcadias, which are very prominent here on Old Litchfield, have been incorporated, as well as the red tile roof. And when you're driving along Litchfield Road, this is a concept of what it could look like. You'll notice there's a marquee out front, that it's attractively designed on all sides, to include the portion where our students are even being picked up with buses. Just to talk a little bit more about the academics, because that is at the heart of what we do as a high school district. Our program is scheduled to open in August of twenty twenty-six. The school will serve between four hundred and four hundred and twenty-five students, and they will be in grades nine through twelve. Of course, in addition to the amazing academy courses that they'll take in their arts, we'll also have our traditional courses, math, English, science, history. Those will be taught through the lens, though, of the arts, so as you're a dancer, things like math are very important to the timing and rhythm of what you're doing as a performer. As you're involved in technology and sound and lighting within a theater, that's a lot of what you'll be learning in the traditional classroom. So while it is heavily focused on the arts, we still, of course, are meeting the Arizona standards for graduation with this school itself. Now moving into the Performing Arts Center, we certainly know that in order to really showcase our students' talent, they're going to need a beautiful stage to do that. So working with ADM Group, we've designed a seven hundred seat Performing Arts Center. This is what the outside of it will look like. We know that in performing arts centers like this, there's a lot of traffic with feet that go into the auditorium at one time and also exit the building at one time. So you'll notice that there is a grand entrance right underneath a stained glass, but there are three other entries on either side of that main door that you can also filter foot traffic into the venue. Next to the entrances on the left, you'll see the box office, ticket theater, or ticket booth as well. As you're driving onto the property and around the Performing Arts Center, this is a view of what the side will look like. You'll see these beautiful large windows that'll offer a lot of light and visibility to the entire hilltop once you're inside the lobby of the Performing Arts Center. Here's a side view of what the side of the Performing Arts Center looks like relative to the school. The school and the Performing Arts Center were designed side by side with the idea that our students will be in the Arts Academy, learning their craft, going to school. But then for those special performances, we want them just to be able to push those sets, push those costumes across a very small plaza where they can access the back of the Performing Arts Center. So this is the breezeway where they'll be going to and from. Moving into the Performing Arts Center, as I mentioned, it's a venue that seats seven hundred patrons. There are two different entry points into the theater that you'll see in the middle there. The seating capacity of the lobby is quite large, it can seat up to two hundred and fifty guests seated. We've kept that in mind that there's going to want to be some spaces ahead of shows to be able to partake in food and beverage, and also perhaps sell some merchandise. It would also be a great place for our, for our district to have our State of the District event, our Veterans Day event, our Hall of Fame event, and other large-scale district-wide events. We also hope that the city would like to use it for some of your signature events, like the State of the City. In the back of house, there's all of the staples that you would see inside of a Performing Arts Center, rooms for stars, showers, restrooms, a green room, everything you would need, not only to meet our students' needs, but also to meet the industry standards that professional entertainers have come to expect in facilities like this. As a high school district, we know that we would use the Performing Arts Center for our students, our campuses and our signature events about a hundred times a year. That means two hundred and sixty-five days a year, there's another opportunity to partner with others who might want to use this space to bring more arts and culture to the West Valley. So it might not be long before we get some more play, some more musical acts, some comedy shows right here in Litchfield Park, should this project and partnership come to fruition. In terms of our timeline, I had mentioned we want to open in August twenty twenty-six. To do that, we've already engaged the work of an architect who's put together a lot of the images you've seen tonight. We've also consulted and retained a contractor to help us start looking at the construction costs and viability of this project, given our budget. In between now and August twenty twenty-six, we have a staffing plan, which is outlined here to show when we plan to hire staff for this, when we plan to name the principal, when we go through processes with the state of Arizona to make this an official school. And that's an overview of the project timeline. And that's an overview of the project timeline. I knew I threw a lot at you all at once, but wanted to pause and see if there are any questions I can answer for you on the Arts Academy or Performing Arts Center.
So Megan, I read in some of the information that the school would tap out at four hundred and was it fifty students? But then at some point, it was at, at any one point, there would never be more than six hundred and fifty students on campus? Or what was, what were the, what were those numbers?
So based on our projections, we'd like to have four hundred to four hundred twenty-five students in attendance. But we know that we might need more capacity if the program is very successful and there's a demand for that. So in working with the city, we wanted to make sure that classroom capacity always stays at a number where the ratio of students to teachers is acceptable. But also given the proximity to the historic area that we're trying to preserve, that it doesn't intrude with traffic, too much traffic by having a high cap. So we've looked at keeping the number at about six hundred students. That would also take into consideration that we'd like to offer evening courses to adults and have adult learning happening on campus. So it would also be a combination of sometimes there may be evening classes where that cap could be or should be considered.
So potentially after a few years and it's, it's, you know, incredibly successful, you could ultimately accept up to six hundred students?
Yes.
And then that will be, I mean, we will, the city will cap that or the school district caps that or? What's that?
The agreement provides for that.
Correct. That's right. That's so many daytime students and so many nighttime students, but total of six hundred.
That's right. It's, it's broken down. So there's so many daytime and nighttime. And also if there's gonna be additional students needed, you're getting that six hundred, Augur Free would have to build additional parking to meet that need, but that is in the agreement.
Because it could end up being by day, six hundred students.
No, ma'am. So there, the six hundred numbers for daytime and nighttime together, that total number would be six hundred, but it wouldn't be there at one time.
I think I get it.
Megan is a beautiful presentation. Thank you. But my question is, you mentioned buses. I thought there were going to be no, no buses on this. I'm just curious. How does that work? Will you be picking kids up from the other schools or?
So we're still navigating the minimum use of buses. We intend, we anticipate that parents of students who are in this very select pathway will likely be students who are receiving transportation from the adults in their life. However, we do know that students from our current school population will also likely want to attend as well. And so what we're looking at is can we create a bus route where we're servicing the students at our existing high schools? For instance, if there's students from Verado who would like to attend this school, that we would have a bus that maybe picks up the students first at Verado, then travel over to Canyon View with the same bus to pick up those students to minimize the amount of bus traffic.
Typically in high school, many juniors and seniors drive themselves. So if you're looking just at the freshman and sophomore classes, two hundred kids. And then because this is gonna be a specialized school, we don't have any busing zones. Kids will be coming from all over the place. So we want to make sure that kids will want to be there and audition to get in. That transportation won't be a barrier, but we really see minimal buses that are actually going to be used in your, like in typical school.
Thank you.
Actually, an add-on to that, well, clearly you would bus your district kids, but there could potentially be kids coming from all over the city and all over, you know, and obviously they wouldn't be bused.
Right. So we don't provide transportation for students outside of our district.
I'm a former high school teacher, so it's thrilling. But a question, do you anticipate kids coming from outside the district?
Absolutely. We intend for this to really be a school that students from all over the valley who have a very defined pathway and intentionality of pursuing arts and entertainment post-high school, this will be the Juilliard of the West Coast. We certainly want to have that reputation of the facilities, the educational program, the staffing, the culture that will make this a place that families will want to send their students.
I think it's really something that we've needed for a long time. The only performing arts high school when my son was in school and he's an artist was way in Phoenix and it was impossible to do. So, thank you.
Any comments or questions? Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Now I'm getting into some slides as well, but first of all, I would like to say thank you guys for coming tonight. So it's been a very busy six, eight months with Augur Free's staff. They've been at City Hall multiple times. We work with ADM multiple times. Our City Hall staff has been to Augur Free. They've been over here and it's been a lot of a lot of discussions, a lot of revisions to get it where it is today. And I think it's a great project and we'll get into that in a second. But you'll see on the map that this map is number thirteen. That means there are thirteen different maps. So that shows you the work that went into this to make sure that it fits till top and flow right. And again, there's been so much, so much discussion that has went into this. And I just want to thank them again for all their work and bringing this to where it is today and we look forward to get this going. But of course, I'd ask Augur Free to speak about the building itself so you could see what the academy was all about. I get the less exciting part of to talk about the map and actually the DA points. Can you go back to them?
Go back one please.
Councilor Reverend Watson. That's okay. You were asking about bus access. So that if you could see it, there's actually a bus lane there that's just south of the pack. The pack is that yellow rect, that yellow rectangle runs north and south. The bus lane there is just south of that. That's how the buses would come into the property. As is being said, they don't expect very much bus use because of the type of students that are coming here. And also just to be honest, buses are less used than it needs to be. Kids are a lot more common that'll be brought with their parents than they were when I was going to school. So anyway, but that is a bus lane there just south of it. Mayor Council, as you see on this map, again, you've all seen this before, but the primary access to the property is through a roundabout that will be built at Brenton and Litchfield Road. That is the Southern East, the Sunset Terrace. That was on the consent agenda tonight to begin the D and E for that. Because to meet the timeline for this, we've got to get started on this roundabout and get it going. So again, that's the primary access to this project. Again, you would see the roundabout and it's designed so that when you're coming to the roundabout, the main viewpoint you see is the Litchfield House. Because again, we want to honor the history of the site. Just north of that, of course, is the library that's been approved by the city and by county. Again, you see the pack and you see the various classrooms. You see the parking. As I said, this is parking map number thirteen. Originally, the parking area was wider than it is now. It's been stretched out. And the reason why is if you're really familiar with the Hilltop, there's a lot of landscaping walls there that are south of the house. And we want to keep all those as much as possible. And that's why the parking lot kind of wraps around to the back there is for that reason. Because we didn't want to get into removing any of those landscaped walls. And to do that, we had to stretch the parking on around. We anticipate the city builds its own parking in DG there north, north and to the west of the library there in that area there that would serve as the Hilltop. So a component of the agreement is that this parking lot would be for school use during school hours. But during non-school hours, it would be parking for the Hilltop, for the Hilltop Park, various things. And this, again, the city will build some its own parking there west of the library. You see there in the very center of the map is the Litchfield House today. You see the casitas there in front. That, that square to the north of Litchfield House is the Train Depot Project. I'll have an update for you guys later on that. There's a lot of different pieces here. But we feel this is a great anchor for this site is to, as we talked about a lot, this needs to be a cultural complex as it once was between Augur Free, between the library, between the Litchfield House, Hilltop Park. There's so many things here and this is a great anchor and it's a great catalyst to really get this project going. I'm gonna get in the DA points, but before I do that, any questions on the map or the general layout? Yes, ma'am.
How many parking spaces in the school parking lot? Just curious.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure it's one ninety-five.
One ninety-five? Because I mean, I'm sure kids carpool, but potentially you could have two hundred kids driving their car, I guess.
Says two twenty-four.
Says what? Hundred and twenty-four.
Councilor Reverend, here, there's a circle right there. I'm trying to read. I know it's written in the circle, but I'll be honest, I could read that from here.
Two ninety-six for the pack and one eighty-four for the school.
One ninety-six for?
Two ninety-six is what's required and one eighty-four is what's required. But what is provided total is three hundred and eighty-nine. So we're doing, there's ninety-three in the library, forty-nine in the area north of D and C. That's primarily for staff and parking for the school. And then the long stretch of parking here is two forty-seven.
So is the formula put together for the school population or potentially the pack has seven hundred seats?
A combination of all of those.
That being said, the pack would mainly be used for performances during outside school hours. And there could be overflow parking for large-scale events, et cetera, in the, in the city parking lot, which will be there on the north side. Other questions on the map? I'm not gonna hit on all these, of course, but just some points that are in the lease agreement. Per the Litchfield family gifting documents, the Hilltop Lane can never be sold. Thus, it is a ground lease. Again, we're not selling the property. It's a ground lease. As I said, it's an anchor for the Hilltop. If approved, again, it would include the Augur Free Academy and Arts Center, the new library, the Litchfield Museum, City Park, walking trails, and more. This is roughly a sixty-five million dollar project, again, targeted with an open date of August of twenty-six. It's a short timeline to get a lot done. Megan said seven hundred seat theater. Per the agreement, the city will be committing the construction sales tax from this project, which is roughly one point eight million dollars, that we will commit that money back into the Hilltop. I think that's a key part of this agreement because it, it needs to be restored. It needs to be back to what it was. And it gets a great catalyst for this, but for us to do that, I think is huge and is very important. Also, all the Augur Free buildings will go through the standard city review process. Built Litchfield Park style. That's also in the agreement. They have to look like the Church at Litchfield Park, Wigwam, so on and so forth. Normally, schools are immune from city zoning. But again, that was a key element of this agreement that these buildings would go through the standard city design process, again, so they look like Litchfield Park. And I would like to thank Augur Free's staff and architects for being willing to do that because that certainly adds to the cost. But again, it makes it look like it belongs here. We're also gonna waive all the permitting fees for this project. The lease term is ninety-nine years, broken into a seventy-five-year term with a twenty-four-year renewal. The Augur Free buildings will be fenced, but not the parking. It's also in the agreement that the fencing cannot be chain-linked. Obviously, chain-linked doesn't belong here. But again, that's only for the buildings, not for the parking. The agreement's also written so that if we would like to, the city can use the Augur Free architect, you know, which is ADM, which is here with us tonight, or their contractor, because certainly there's economies of scale to be considered here. If we could use them to design the various buildings, the library, to do the buildings, the work, contracting, et cetera. The city can use the pack for up to six events per year. We have asked that the suitable field dirt that's removed from this site, if you know the elevation, there's a lot of, a lot of drop-up there. That all the usable dirt that is cut out, that that dirt will actually stockpile there north of the casitas. And the reason why there is so we can make a nice event terrace out of there. So we can use that for events for the Hilltop itself, for the Litchfield Museum. That saves us money or saves Augur Free money and gives us a usable asset as well. Construction will commence within twelve months of agreement. Not a bit worried about that, of course, if we're talking about getting it going next summer. Construction will be complete within eighteen months of commitment to the construction. Augur Free will pay for its portion of utility work, mains, et cetera, obviously according to what percentage they need. As I said, staff feels that this project is key to anchor this Hilltop and will bring a missing asset to Litchfield Park through the arts. Do some various elements. Again, Augur Free, the roundabout, the new library, Phase One Hilltop Restoration to be coordinated to open in fall of twenty-six. When I say Phase One, what I mean by Phase One is to put it back in desert scape and greenscape. Make the Hilltop look good again, make it presentable, but Phase Two would actually have all the park amenities. We don't know all that yet as far as what barriers park amenities there will be. We will go through charrette meetings this winter where we meet the public and see what kind of things people want to see here. What do they not want to see? But again, that's Phase Two. Where Phase One again is to put it back in desert scape and greenscape and make it look nice again, make it look usable again. But the part two would, or the Phase Two, we need more of the bells and whistles for the park. That makes sense. I know some of you were concerned about utility service. There is a twenty-four inch water main running down Litchfield Road. We, of course, met with Liberty and had this discussion. The sewer service is via fifteen-inch sewer main at the Sun Health Roundabout there where the flagpole is. That is there today. Per the Sun Health twenty twenty DA, they have to install two eight-inch connecting pipes from that main to the City Hilltop property line. Sun Health has agreed to move up the timeline for that to get those connections done. Again, it's really disconnecting from the flagpole there to the property line. So it's, it's, it's already very close. Staff is coordinating with Goodyear Fire for fire service Hilltop needs. That was a little complicated because it's not just a question of fire hydrants, but a question of how, how far can the fire truck spray? As you know, there's a pathway that goes around that Hilltop. That being said, fire trucks can only climb the grades that are so steep. Fire trucks weigh seventy-five thousand pounds. There's a lot of things that come into issue here with being able to get fire trucks around that Hilltop. That's something to figure out. Yeah, we're working with the Historical Society to align the lease and restoration of the Litchfield House. You guys know that. Again, we're gonna build a parking lot on the north side. Staff is working with Colliers that used to be Hillguard Wilson. A lot of you will know that name for the engineering work on the Hilltop and the roundabout. It should be noted that Sun Health is also using Colliers to design the Camelback Roundabout. So it makes sense to have them design both of them. Ideally, we would be building both at the same time. So I mean, if we're, if we're gonna mess up traffic, let's mess up traffic and build both of them. So. But again, it makes sense to use the same company. I've covered the phases. Again, we hold charrette meetings. And the city will complete the design and engineering for the roundabout parking utilities Phase One this year. But we won't actually build anything until next year, till next fiscal year. So again, we'll do all the D and E this year, but we'll start building next fiscal year. And part of that is just, is just financial limitations. As you guys know from previous discussions that Paige has had, it's not a question of having the money. It's a question of how much you could spend in your budget through AELR and those sort of things. Those limitations that we have per state law. Again, not a question of city being able to afford these projects, but just really a question of budget limitations. That's clear. Mayor Council, I've got a lot of information to chew here as far as DA points. Again, the document is here. Any questions on these points so far?
Just a piece of information that the council, the council is aware of commitments that were made and I believe it's in the DA, but it's also a personal commitment that was based on free. And that is that the library and the improvements to the Hilltop to get it presentable and looking at a nice Hilltop again, those will be completed by the city at the same time as the school Performing Arts Center are ready to open. It's not something that you can scum to the project and then let it be postponed. But we will have a, I know we'll have a timeline that's consistent with the timeline that we put together for the construction of the Augur Free assets so that we make sure that both, both of them are coordinated and get done at the same time.
Other questions, Mayor and Council?
I have a question, but I do have a comment that the coordination, Matthew, of all of these moving parts is extremely complicated and I want, I want to compliment you on all you're doing to make the pieces fit together and work. It's not an easy job. I know that. I've seen your binder.
Well, thank you for that comment. I would like to say really the credit goes to staff, not to me. The staff has been very busy between our city planner, between our city engineer and public works working on this. Our city planning and city engineer, they've got a whole lot to do this year. So if you see us buying oxygen tanks for them, you'll understand why. But again, I do appreciate the comment. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Council.
Are you finished?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, senior board, how much are questions? Is there a motion to approve the Augur Free School District Joint Development agreement and ground lease as it's presented in your package? Okay, if we move in second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those who favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? You do not need a roll call, correct?
You do not.
So we have our half of the deal done. Hopefully, we'll be able to celebrate here when your, your board meets next and we'll have a lot of different news forward.
Which is a question. When is that? December? December thirteenth? Third, okay.
Sounds good.
Do we need to go and cheerlead that?
We want to, I want to just say thank you not only to Augur Free, but also our staff. I've been, I've been an observer at least. I've been an observer at least of the hard work that's been putting to get this to get this to come together and it is, we should be proud of both as a member of the council, but also we're citizens of Auguria Free School District, so. Thank you and thank you to your staff and thank you and to your staff. Good job.
And actually, I just want to add, so I had mentioned earlier before you guys came that I was certainly, all of us, very happy about the bond, but especially in my opinion, that our our voters still, you know, certainly appreciate quality education and that we're severely underfunded and that that's the only way to help, so it passed, hallelujah, right? Anyway.
All right. We're going to move on to something even more exciting. It comes to an amendment of our sign code.
Thanks, guys. Thank you, Wendy.
Wants to listen about the sign.
Right.
You know, all we're going to do is introduce it to you, probably dead thing automatically. But we're going to actually have a moment on the agenda where we get to hear from the panel before they just look at your package.
Mayor and Council, good evening. I don't have flowers, I don't have pretty pictures. I just have federal compliance to discuss. This item is assigned to a text amendment based on a Supreme Court decision. I'd be happy to go through a quick presentation or answer any questions regarding the information in your packet. This has gone through a planning zoning commission work study session as well as a recommendation hearing two weeks ago that was unanimous in support of the text amendment.
But were you asking us if we were to have a brief presentation?
Yes, available to.
Say yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's good for the council to understand why we're doing this.
So thank you, Mayor and Council, Randy Proch, your city planner, planning director, historic preservation officer and special projects manager. This stems from a Supreme Court decision called Reed v. Town and Gilberts, what Arizona on the map as far as content neutrality. It's a dry subject, I'm sorry in advance, we'll go through as quickly as possible. Essentially, any sort of content regulations on signs falls under strict scrutiny as far as any sort of restrictions that we place on it has to go through a two-part test. The easiest way to avoid a lawsuit is to not regulate content. Our current code has content regulations that are in direct conflict of federal law. So if we can't talk about what it says, what can we talk about? We can talk about the type, bond, size, placement, lighting, permanent or temporary materials, design and visibility. So that's essentially what's on the books today is fairly close and this was an opportunity to address a couple of other items that really get us into modern compliance and so. Uh, this included any language regarding content neutrality was added just as far as how we review and approve signs, it's not based on what it says. There's new definitions that were added in lines with this, as well as some updated allowances. And for just some sign types, we wanted to make sure that we were in line with peer cities, but certainly not opening the floodgates for anything new or different than what's come to expected here in the city. Any sort of content restrictions that said must state hours of operations, cannot advertise, those all had to get tossed with this, again, Supreme Court decision, so those have just been struck completely. Any sign types that were content based, and that means if you call it a menu board, you only know it's a menu board because you're reading that it says cheeseburger ninety nine cents. So now that's just called drive-through sign, it's a real pickle unintended as far as how you have to look at these versus not actually see what they state. So a lot of those definitions and terms were just made vague on purpose so that we're not basing it again on what it says. Lastly, political signs, those are handled by the state, we have no business worrying about them, regulating them, that's all stated. A couple of new definitions as well, we didn't actually call out the price sign for gas stations, this is something that is nowadays electronic sign. We don't allow electronic signs, which in the city, you think of like a billboard or electronic flashing messages, but we had a contradiction because we do have, you know, a price gas is electronic sign, so we did carve out allowance for those sorts of situations, but not every situation. Real estate signs, we've clarified that you only talk about a for sale sign on the property. The whole reason this lawsuit came to be and federal law changed, and I'm sorry you guys are sticking around for this, is the church, it's called Good News Church in Gilbert, Arizona, was putting out signs because they had a different locations they were meeting at. And the town of Gilbert basically said that they were further restricted than other types of signs that you would see like open house or other kinds of messages that were conveyed. This is what led to the Supreme Court basically saying that if you allow a sign to be placed at a corner and right of way, regardless of what it says, everyone is treated the same. Hence, this new definition called neighborhood signs, whether it's for open house, Girl Scout cookies, garage sales, what have you. Again, cannot read what it says, it's just a new temporary type of sign allowance. The last one there is called incidental, again, I can't call it wayfinding, I can't call it directory. I couldn't say, you know, turn here for drive-through because that would be basing regulations on what it says. These are just for any of those situations that can't be seen with my device, it's not, it's not advertising, it's not part of, you know, that sort of business identity. This is just to help people get around parking lots. Uh, prohibited section, again, as discussed, electronic reader panel, so gas station good, flashing billboard no. This extends as well to the billboard trucks, we don't really have any going around, but if we did, we're formalizing that they are prohibited. This is again exempted for taxis, buses, you know, any sort of arrow boards, Route three, going this way taxis, same thing, those are fine. Vehicle signs, this was a hot topic of sorts of planning and zoning commission, this has been further clarified and defined now in this amendment that if you, you know, have your vehicle wrapped and you're driving it around all day, if it's your plumbing company, you're just fine. If you, you know, get it wrapped, it's disabled and you're parking it against, you know, the corner of the street, looking to get essentially another sign, that's not okay. Uh, pretty historic, not really a thing anymore, but roof mount signs, pylons, pole signs from yesteryear, we're just formalizing those prohibited. And then lastly, portable signs, these are things on wheels, you know, things that inflate, those sorts of things, not okay unless it's a temporary sign handled through a temporary sign. Next, the formerly the sign code had about a dozen different tables depending on what your zoning was. This has been clarified to say, are you a house or are you not a house, essentially residential versus non-residential. Residential signs, you think at Shae at Wigwam, Renaissance Village, those sorts of things. We really don't really have any more opportunities, we're out of places to put, you know, new subdivisions, which is okay. We'll handle the non-residential now. So the other one that came up, that's a new allowance, is wall signs in public facilities. Think Church at Litchfield Park, think our library, rec center of Visago, these are all public facility. Uh, Litchfield Elementary School, these are all sites that may already have signs in the building, we do not formally permit those. This is essentially creating the opportunity. However, considering that these locations are surrounded by houses, we do not want to have those to be illuminated. None of the current ones are illuminated, so we didn't want someone in their backyard looking up and seeing something vibrant in the night sky. This doesn't affect any of our commercial centers, every single one of our commercial centers, you know, Plaza, the park, Fry's, Albertson's, they all have a CSP, CSP is comprehensive sign program. Basically, a PD overlay for signs, they all have their own unique standards. But one of our centers actually has two, which that's another story. Uh, moved residential subdivision flagpoles, we have no more model homes, so we didn't need to worry about that anymore. And then lastly, not conforming signs violations, those are just fine as is according to my attorney, and so those were not touched. Couple other hot topics that come up similar to vehicle signs, murals. Murals are odd situation because if it's a picture on the side of this library of a panda bear in bamboo, it's art, if you put it on the side of Panda Express, it's advertising. And I am not the one to split hairs, neither, I don't think Joe wants to be in that business either. Essentially, whether it's signage, whether it's art, it's a sign, that's not a situation we want to be in as far as commercial speech versus not commercial speech. Uh, governmental signs, think, you know, turn here for downtown, the new street banners going across, you know, La Loma and Village Parkway. We are essentially exempting ourselves, we do have the ability even with Supreme Court to remove ourselves. Electronic message sign, we've clarified and discussed as well as commercial vehicles and banners. Banners are temporary, situation banners should not be a permanent fixture to the side of the building or to fence line within an outdoor patio space, per se. Uh, one of the other things that came up is some of the businesses are getting more clever, you think Chase Bank, Panda, Walgreens, they all have the sign inside the building, but then they put a glass window in front of it, that's a building mountain sign and that's been clarified with this. That is the end of my very dry presentation, we'll be doing these more in the future, there's a lot of text amendments to go through and I'll be happy answering your questions.
Doesn't die.
This brings up a little PTSD, I just have to tell you, I raised a whole bunch of money years ago for the Litchfield Elementary marquee we were going to put in. Never checked with the city, imagine that, didn't know the rules. So anyway, and it was really tricky because obviously for parents, you want a lighted sign, you want, I mean, we literally, when we ended up first putting it, it was out and people were putting up the little letters and so you may all know that there is a marquee sign in the Litchfield Elementary parking lot that you have to drive into the parking lot to see, so all that, so there's still no way to be able to put a marquee at Litchfield Elementary with a little marquee.
Mayor, Councilmember Donahue. The new allowance is for wall mounted signs on the building to not be illuminated. However, reader panels or monument signs, you do have that ability because those are within right of way near the street where light has already been cast and it's not up high, you know, ten, twelve foot off the ground, so that option is available and I can't think.
But not a message that says no school Friday, please pick up your, I mean, that kind of, I mean, you know, a school marquee, electronic school marquee.
I, so, and all my friends left, but if you noticed on the Auguria site, they are showing the same sort of electronic message. By default, the answer is no, however, there is an allowance, I don't know if you can bring it back up by chance, that through a comprehensive sign program, it could be entertained. We did not want to give carte blanche to that opportunity. You think of like the Owens World Plaza, it's next to Bashes and Dice Art, they do have an electronic message that's very bright, very up high in the sky. Can you start the slide, please, or jump to, I think, slide eight?
Well, of course, my argument was it's the only school in Litchfield Park, it's not.
Right there, thank you.
I lost that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I want to introduce some to it again.
So that'd be the third bullet down, through a CSP, we could entertain it, but.
Depends, so it's an electronic message, depends, so, there's, there's a parentheses next to that.
Asterisk, yes.
All right.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. You may remember we went through a lengthy discussion on signs on trucks a while back. And I I haven't had time to, it looks like we take hours to analyze this thing thoroughly to figure out all the ramifications of it. But I noticed under the definition of billboard, you added any sign on a truck. Um, it's definition of billboard and then I noticed that we've required a permit for any sign. And then I've noticed that any sign is less than four square feet can be lighted. Now, by taking and sticking a vehicle under the definition of billboard, have we opened up the door to some unintended consequences? Or has this all been analyzed thoroughly to make sure we're not doing something kind of weird? And I have neighbors lit up, brightly lit up, four square foot sign on the side of their truck flashing all night.
Vice Mayor, I can quickly peruse the same information that you were looking up to confirm and certainly between now and the next hearing in this matter, follow up.
Yeah, I'd like somebody to look at this and make sure we're not getting into something that's and and, you know, I apologize, but I didn't have what looks like probably about four hours to to just to read this thoroughly and analyze it. Uh, but some things did jump out based upon some prior problems we've had. And and those are the ones that kind of came up. My second question is, what is the purpose behind prohibiting lighted signs on public buildings?
Sure, Vice Mayor, to clarify, right now on the books, we don't allow any wall signs on public facilities. And we've somewhat contradicted that, you know, Florence Ferdinand Memorial Library, Litchfield Park Rec Center, Litchfield Elementary School, those are all in a technical sense violating the allowances because they aren't allowed. So some of it was to retroactively approve those situations. However, we knew that these were in such close proximity to residential areas that we didn't want to create a commercial sense of these businesses or these institutions. So we wanted to give the opportunity to show off the building a little bit and have signs. Uh, this has come up a lot with the old Visago, the, you know, the new business that's coming in, it's in a weird situation because it's intended to be a commercial storefront, but it's surrounded by homes, so where's that happy medium? And I think we've tried to address that by having wall signs non-illuminated as an option because they are, because the height and the adjacency to the homes, however, the monument sign can still be lit that's adjacent to the roadway.
But why, yes, since we're all subject to a phone call, an email, a text message from a citizen who's unhappy with a lighted sign on a public building, and that's our our protection against the city doing something crazy. Why are we prohibiting the city if we think it's necessary to put up a very lightly backlit sign uh, on a building to help people find it in the dark?
Sure, and Vice Mayor, that's certainly something, again, if I can take this feedback and look into best practices to see if that would be intrusive. In a similar situation, I can think of a uh, the gas station I worked on, that on one side was houses and the rest on the other side was the rest of the commercial center. On the residential side, it was non-illuminated, but on the commercial side, it was.
It's not a public building, I'm talking about.
No, incorrect.
Public building.
I don't have, I don't have that exact.
And the Performing Arts Center on the on the Litchfield Road. Is there no intent to put some very light backlighting so you can find it in the dark riding down the road?
Sure, so Vice Mayor, currently current code, not allowed at all, proposed code, not illuminated, but to your point, if it is something that we can further specify through a backlit only or through the Kelvin as far as the temperature, the lighting, the brightness, those sorts of standards we can further specify.
Or or maybe through some application and permitting process or a variance or, I don't know, something. I I just struggle with the concept of this out and out prohibiting it.
Up in the Performing Arts Center, as long as we had a comprehensive sign package, we could define what's okay there as opposed to what's in this general stigma of this ordinance.
Yeah.
There's a CSP or something.
Yeah, so that's how, because you've got the same kinds of issues that he described with the guest, excuse me, the gas station sign. Part of the, part of where it's going to be pointing at may be a commercial area. But then right next, right next to it on the other side, it's going to be pointing out at the La Loma you know, residences, or maybe it's going to point at the neighborhood that's across the street. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to think through that, think on a individual basis when it comes to stuff like that.
And but do these prohibitions in here allow us to do a CSP to get around that?
For a prohibition? That's what I understood you said.
So Mayor, Vice Mayor, I think of the CSP as a way to creatively find solutions.
Yes.
There's language in the code that says the CSP cannot directly conflict. So if it says, you know, you can't have electronic billboard and your CSP says I want electronic billboard, that's not the intent of the CSP, similar to a PD overlay, you can tailor standards accordingly due to site conditions and site constraints. So to answer the question, yes, through the CSP, that could be an option.
Is there some CSP language in this ordinance somewhere?
There, there is an entire section of CSP, previously it had standards for all types of signs. The point of the CSP is to create or change those standards, so it's been made. So it's been made more vague on purpose to not dictate what a CSP is, but rather introduce the options to the CSP.
Those are my questions. A lot of weak CSP section.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to introduce ordinance twenty-four dash two eighty-six sign code? Any further discussion on the introduction of this ordinance? All those favorite, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. The ordinance is introduced. We will have another, look at it and then it comes back for adoption.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, there is an E as far as I understand for an executive session, multiple, multiple executive sessions. So is there a motion to go into executive session under ten, A through E?
No. Second.
All those are favorite, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're in executive session. With the amount of executive session, we will not, not any further business. I will adjourn. So everyone is welcome to stay. Some of them, some of you may be required to stay. All right, we're back in the regular meeting. We're, we're being taped again. Is there a motion to adjourn? There's a second. All those are favorites, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned.